The agreement shouldn't be for, you know, should be lined up with our fiscal year. In the past, we've got off and said, okay, we approve it a year at a time. And then each year, we go back and approve it. So in my view, section three of the term of the agreement, from April 1st, 2019, or in this case, April 16th, 2019, the 3rd, September 30th, 2019. The agreement may be renewed up to, you know, each successive year for the next three years. And that, under section four, are modified to reflect that same situation. I don't see any problem that if not terminated, that it could be reviewed. But I am concerned we're allocating dollars that are not our dollars to allocate. So I believe that it needs to be modified consistently with what I can say.
So you're going to make a motion to amend?
So I would have-
Mayor, if I may, before he makes that motion. So the agreement was reviewed by Mick, and he and I discussed it. The initial, or the main term of this agreement is the 18 months. Basically gives them six months of support this year and then next year. And only if it's not terminated, then it goes into the next three years, which is something that the council can do. And also makes it much easier for both the Family Crisis Center of the Big Bend and the city to budget forecast into the future on these revenues. So you want to jump in there, Mick? Mick's not listening. Mick, can you hear us?
Yes, I can barely hear you now. Some of you I'm having trouble hearing. I'm sorry tonight. But yeah, that agreement was drawn with those different years for compensation. But, you know, actually, everything in this type of agreement is subject to availability of funds. So this is precious in intention of funds being allocated in the budget each year to this purpose. So I did have any problem believing the way it was written. But the first year is only for the last six months of this budget year forever.
So I propose an amendment that the term on this agreement shall be a period of six months, beginning April 16th, 2019, and ending April, or September 30th, 2019. This agreement may be, and that's the first amendment, that the, and that is in section three term of the agreement. And that the, because the next part of the agreement may be renewed up to three successive one-year periods, beginning on October. That is all fine. And so it's the only-
Got your amendment you're making is from today-
Through the end of September of this year. The rest of it, I believe, works out.
Okay.
So you have a motion and a second to approve-
As written. And then we have an amendment to fund from today to-
We got a vote on the first amendment?
Yeah, we got the first one on that one. So any discussion on the first amendment? We got Sarah standing there.
I would like to wait till you all approve everything, and then I'll be happy to.
Okay. Yeah. So in other words, we'll vote on the first amendment by Ramon. And then, once we vote that up or down?
It goes back up. So you got to vote on the amendment first-
Right, on the amendment first.
Which is what I made. Then you vote on the motion.
And then on the, on the motion?
Yes, thank you. Just to make sure we're clear.
Okay. Follow it? We have to vote on what-
So the amendment says, very simply, for the six-month period, then we vote on the motion.
Okay, it's just an amendment to add to. Okay? So all those in favor?
The amendment-
On the amendment? Raise your right hand. All those opposed, likewise. Now, let's move back to the main motion on the funding. Okay? Discussion on it? Any more discussion?
No, it's a good agreement.
That's a good agreement. Sarah, want to say anything?
So this amendment actually doesn't give them through 2023? It only gives them to 2022?
It gives them till 2019, September 2019, and then-
And then three years through 2019.
That's correct.
This one?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Strickoli, the executive director of the Family Crisis Center. Mr. Mayor, city council members, city manager. I'd like to thank you on behalf of the board of directors of the Family Crisis Center of the Big Bend and myself for supporting, showing your support for the Family Crisis Center of the Big Bend. It's a much-needed 501(c)(3) in our community. And I just want to say thank you so very much. You have any questions for me? Thank you so much again.
Thank you. Now, let's get back to Ramon's motion. Any more discussion? Yes, sir.
The only question that I would raise is the agreement does require that a city council member serves as liaison to provide guidance and direction to the FCC/BD and monitor activities, and she'll be a voting member of that. Do you want to use this opportunity for to approve someone who'll do that right now? I know Lucy has expressed interest in doing that.
That's not on the agenda. We actually heard that, right? Okay, so I'm going to have to address that.
Okay.
The person that is voted on to our board, they have to go through the same. It's a volunteer. We have bylaws. They have to pass a background check. They have to be voted on by our board and approved by our board. So we have invited two members from the city council to come and be a part of our board meeting. And then they'll apply, the same as anyone else would. And they have to be approved by our board. They can't just be appointed.
So would it be appropriate, then, to delay that in the agreement?
I'm sure that someone on the city council is going to be able to pass and be approved by our- We invite people to be part of our board. So surely someone is going to be able to be a part of our board. I just can't speak for my board. And we can't assume who's going to be able to be put on the board based on what my board recommends. And I can't speak for them.
Okay, let's get back to Ramon's motion. Let's vote on that. Appointing somebody from the council is not on the agenda. So we have to postpone that until next meeting. Put it on the agenda.
Actually, Mayor, I think two meetings ago, Lucy was, you guys voted for Lucy to be the one-
She was on.
She was nominated.
Who was on the agenda?
You didn't vote for her. Okay. So let's vote on Ramon's motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, likewise. Okay, motion carries. Get their money. Thank you all very much. Let's move over to item three.
Mayor, let's try this again. Discuss, consider, take action to accept the proposal from KSA Engineering to conduct a street evaluation improvement planning study.
Okay. Entertaining motion.
I move that we take action to accept the proposal from KSA Engineering to conduct a street evaluation and improvement planning study.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
So since I'm the guy who keeps raising all the issues about roads, first question is, what is the product that will come out of this study?
I'm going to turn over to KSA. The, actually, on the last page of the proposed study, it breaks down the deliverables for this.
Watch out.
Yes, sir.
City Council, my name is Chris Willley, I'm KSA. And yes, as you see in our proposal, we have a list of scope of services there. And what we're going to do is analyze the condition of the streets. We will categorize them as per those conditions. And we'll present, we can come back and present to council. But we will develop maps, and we will develop a street management plan for the future, for the future maintenance of the streets. So those things are outlined in our proposal. And we are open to any changes you want to make in our scope of services.
Lou, you, will you prioritize the speeds of need?
Yes, sir.
Number one, feet repaired or resurfaced?
Correct.
Okay.
And we will also, when we do analyze the condition of the streets, we'll propose alternative methods of construction.
Can you talk about the funding sources within the report?
Yes. We can go through and identify the funding sources for streets. Those range from bonds. And of course, some sources are better than other sources. CBG, which is Community Development Lot Grant. Those funds can be used for streets. It's not a good source, because street budgets are so large. It takes so much money to reconstruct streets. Some other sources, really, they are limited. Those are the two that come to mind off the top of my head. But as I mentioned, we'll go through and identify all of the resources.
So you'll help identify sources of what is the type of funding? Limited funding?
Well-
Go ahead.
On the conditions of the street, let's see if I get this correct. You would be, your crew will be coming in, they look at all the streets, and then they will prioritize the one that needs to work first. What's the criteria for saying this needs to be approached? This priority will, will priority, what's criteria? Safety, range issue?
Yes, correct. We'll look at, well, we'll take all of those into consideration. Change the current condition of the asphalt, the base material. And we will go through, prioritize the streets. But all of those items will be taken into consideration. And then also, we can do a geotechnical analysis. I'm not sure if that's not included in the scope. But we can do the geotechnical analysis to determine the best method for rehabilitation of the streets. So that way, the product's the best along with the other.
Yes, sir.
So, Chris, I read through the details of what's in the Army Corps of Engineers, FHWA qualification, including the pavement condition index method that you proposed using. Talks about breaking that area down by 5,000 square foot chunks, and then doing about 10% of those. So will you be doing 100% of the roads or only 10% in 5,000 square foot chunks?
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll do, in our study, we'll do all the streets.
So you're doing every block? And are you planning to do, outline for public states as well?
Yes.
Okay, so roughly 1,000 city blocks, you will do all of them. Have you done any preliminary assessments? Because I presume this is a fixed-price contract? And what's your confidence level of being able to do all that, given all that you've heard tonight about the wonderful status of our streets?
There will not, I guess we're kind of hinting at change orders and whatnots. No, our company, we stick to our budget, our scope. And so we will do it for this cause.
Okay. And are you going to use a scale of PCI of 1 to 100? Or what will the scale you use? What's going to be, what's the product that comes back? Because PCI is a scale of 1 to 100, or 1 to 10. What are you going to use so that those of us who are lame and understand roads will have some sense about how you score them and what's your recommendations are?
At the moment, I'm going to say we're going to use 1 to 10. But depending on the streets, and you know, if we get into the analysis and it's too close, we might change that during the analysis.
Do you plan to do any core samples, or are you only going to use a visual inspection?
Well, that's, that's what I guess I mentioned prior to, but we can definitely take geot, do geotechnical analysis.
But that's not in the scope?
It's not, it's not in the scope.
So you're not doing any core? That's why I'm asking, just trying to make sure. What you're not.
It is a possibility, but it's currently not in the scope.
So on the scope, okay? And can you describe what your simplified street management plan will, and annual street improvement recommendations will look like? Being, you presented a report. So let's just take, you know, some street. If you were to walk out, out in front of City Hall here, between East Avenue E and East Holland, you'd have some assessment. Let's say it's a 33. So now that you scored a 33, whatever that app might have been, what would you use to describe in your street management plan relative to that and all the other 33s that exist in the city?
Great. So first, we'll start with a prioritization plan and bring the streets up to par. And then with management plan, we will determine the amount of funds that we'll take to keep those streets at a good condition. And, you know, one of those, one mechanism is chip sealing to rejuvenate the asphalt. That'll be the main.
So there's a big difference between chip seal and hot asphalt?
Correct.
What is your general guidance relative to chip sealing or hot asphalt? What drives, what recommendations would they?
Well, first of all, we have to bring the street, so in the prioritization plan, once we go through and rehab the streets, whatever method we use, we have to bring the street up to par. I mean, you only, once they are rehabbed, you only chip seal, say, for at least five years. They'll be good for a certain amount of time. Of course, that amount of time, it all has to, of course, we have to stay within the city's budget. And so it's, it takes everything into consideration. But we will work through the prioritization plan and how we're going to get these streets rehabbed first. And then, and then the maintenance plan will kick into effect as far as-
So given what you've heard and probably what you've observed, yes, and roads that are in deep trouble, will your recommendation be that they are hot asphalt or that we rebuild the base and chip seal?
I guess I'll correct. Well, the streets that are in bad shape, it will definitely be a full dump repair.
And so full dump repair? I'm just trying to get some clarification what that means. Full dump repair is pour the base, put the material in there to stabilize the base, lay the next layer on top of that, and do a finish coat, which typically is going to be hot asphalt?
Correct.
Okay, and what's a typical block cost for asphalt? If you're going to do that complete, full part?
Kind of ballpark number is a million dollars a mile.
A million dollars a mile? Okay.
Hold on, a mile?
A mile, a little block, block, yeah. A million dollars a mile. That seems about right. That kind of just made a theory, worry about a million dollars a mile. About three miles out there. And typically, how long does a block come?
Five hundred feet?
Point six miles.
Sorry?
Point six miles.
Point six miles. Okay. So, and what's the unique talent that's required to go do this? Clearly, you've got 23,164 hours to go do the street condition and summary analysis. Do you do this visually with a couple of guys sitting around a truck driving around? Or do you have laser technology? Because when I look at the PCI index, it looks at depths, it looks at cracks, it looks at edges, it looks at all of that. Do you have an automated process you do that with?
Well, yes, there are multiple things involved in that, that cost. Will be a site visit. And then, of course, there's always the office time. We will present and prepare exhibits, report. So there are multiple items in that cost.
So how long is it going to take you to do all of that?
It's going to take, I think, two, I would say two weeks at least. Gather the data, take the data back to the office. And then hopefully, there will be some additional products that will come from this study. Hopefully, we'll be able to turn over maps. That'll be helpful to the city. Hopefully, map utilities, map your street, you know. But hopefully, you achieve a digital set of maps.
But that scope is not part of this program.
It'll be pro bono, just because it'll be developed. Any of our files are due on the information that we present or give you.
So we'll get a GIS digital framework? I'm just trying to understand what you just said.
Correct, GIS or CAD.
Okay. And do you know whether or not the city has the capacity to accept that digital input?
I do not, but we can print map software and send it to you. We're not, I mean, our company, we serve you, the city of Alpine. And so, and we do not try to inflate the scope. But we're willing to work with you, you know, the best we can.
To order.
For the purpose of considering- It's 7:02.
Gas department is using GIS, and right now, we have some people in the water department that are already GIS. So given, you know, the appropriate file, there's also assistance that we can receive in updating that either through Sol Ross or through Mr. Griffin, who's with the 911 office.
But is that all that in place? So when this, if this study were to be approved, will we roll that in in a couple of weeks? Doesn't sound like it.
Well, Mr. Griffin is. And he's the one who's been updating our planning and zoning maps. And he did some work for Robert Palongo, and he was doing some work for Jay Hori. And then they decided to give that to Sol Ross. And I think I'm going to say his name wrong. Mr. Urbain or Banzic?
Urbanzic.
Urbanzic. Had some students that were working on it, and then I think he retired.
He's not retired.
Or he moved to change the department or something?
I don't know, he might have changed departments, but he's still up there.
And so we have these files that they started that are still there. But I think between what KSA is doing on this and then what will come out of the needs assessment on the underground part of it, I think should tie in really well on the GIS. They'll be able to trade off maps and information as well. They'll be able to overlap.
Who is our city expert on that? Because if the college professor goes off and does something else, and clearly, we wouldn't expect that KSA on forever. Who is the expert that's going to maintain all this, which is essential to our success?
Well, I believe Luis is the person that's doing the GIS at the gas department. And I don't know exactly who at the water department is learning it right now.
So they're all kind of independent?
Well, they all work for the city.
But someone's, so as, I am an expert in the city. It has an expert systems architecture and software integration. There clearly needs to be someone who's responsible for integrating all this in a way that actually works. Now, the good news is, things have gotten a lot more easier to use from an interface standpoint. But without someone who worries about that system integration of the multiple software interfaces that occur, which are always being updated, we're going to have a blob here, a blob here, a blob here, a blob there. And unless we have an expert in the city, we're going to have lots of blobs that will not integrate. So I do believe we have to have an expert in the city who understands this stuff. Doesn't sound like we have one right now, so. Chris, thank you for answering my questions.
Duration for doing the, the street condition evaluation and the planning study? How long?
Duration?
I think when we talked with Bill, he said he'd have preliminary done within, within the 30 days. And I don't know if that still stands, because that was looking at what your workload was back in January. But I think he had told me within two months to have it completed.
Sixty days, correct.
So two months, couple of months, two days? And then my last question is, apparently, the, the study, the expenditure is 45, 659. Twenty would come from what we've already approved in budget. And now I understand that the other 25, 659 would come from a contingency fund and not from some other department.
Right. We have a contingency line item in our department.
Okay.
Any more questions? Thank you very much, Chris, appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Mayor, city council, city manager, wall power, whatfore. If you remember, about three weeks ago, maybe a quarter of a month now, we had Jared here that explained about this situation we're talking about right now. About the state of the streets and the study that we were proposing at that time. And he explained to you in depth how that the study will not be anything with just dead expenses, it's not going to help anything. Because the city can only afford a certain type of fix of these streets. We only have $13 million coming into this city. This is a very cash-strapped budget we're talking about here. And we can't go off and be talking about a billion dollars a mile putting in asphalt when we can't even afford pothole fixes. So we're on the wrong track, folks. As the old saying is, this dog won't hunt. We better take, we better take a look at ourselves, and we better understand that we do what we can do. I know a lot about dirt work. And I know how this, these streets, we're blessed out here in this West Texas with not having much rainfall. And we have a pretty stable type soil here. All we need is chip seal. And Jared did a good job on the streets that the city allowed him to contract for. So we don't need this study, people. This is ridiculous. Let's look at it. Let's look at it, what we can afford. That's all I can say.
That's true. Any more discussion? Okay, see, none? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, likewise. It's a tie, and I go with the engineer. Looking at the tie. Okay, let's move on to number item four.
Mayor, this is the, this is to discuss, consider, take action to improve requests for qualifications for on-call engineering service for the city of Alpine.
Again, the motion.
I move to approve a request for qualifications for an on-call engineering service for the city of Alpine.
I'll second. Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
So the question is, why do we need an on-call engineer?
I think at the last meeting, we, in that discussion, you asked, well, why haven't we seen the RFQ for the engineer?
My question, that's not the answer to my question. I asked, why do we need an engineer?
For a lot of reasons. Most cities have city engineers in the local government code. The city engineer is usually one of the positions that is appointed and established by city council. You don't have anyone here in the city that can do that. Of course, we don't have the software for an engineer to be on staff for it. So having an on-call engineer- So having an on-call engineer available, one, to oversee these public works projects as required by the Occupational Code, Chapter 1001. They can also lend support to the building services in reviewing flats and grading designs, and dealing with other environmental and regulatory agencies that we deal with on a regular basis. So right now, we're in the process of amending our wastewater treatment plant, and we did go out for an engineer to do that, because we don't have one on staff to deal with that. So having one that's on-call, meaning that we, they're not on a set contract amount for a whole fiscal year, just put somebody at, kind of at our service, be able to handle these issues when they come up.
So I did a little research and checked out Section 11001.053. They certainly don't include one for city roads. I talked to the compliance office, that the Texas Board of Construction Engineers, which is a Texas government organization, and while it says the public organs is not involved, we'll let Dan and Jorge here, we can play expense for completed as less than twenty thousand, road maintenance is not required in the chair. So, okay.
No, we're not doing road maintenance, we're talking about doing road reconstruction, underground infrastructure improvements in storm, in a stormwater, in flood zone, dealing with stormwater, if we're talking about crossing the creek, there may be army corps of engineer permits that need to be taken out. And again, there are a multitude of other reasons why an engineer on-call can have certain situations that we're currently not addressing appropriately.
I understand, and very specific, I asked specifically about me doing roads that currently exist. This is the head of compliance for Texas State on Engineers, specifically said, let me make it perfectly clear what I said again. Item number three under Section 1001.053, if you are rebuilding a road, including the base up, you do not need an engineer. If you are building a new road, you do need an engineer. So I'm just reporting back, because that's different than the information you got from TML. I thought it worth while to share that information.
So, the difference between on-call or just calling someone for a specific project, likewise? What are we looking at?
Well, usually, if you set one up as, here's the contract, you're going to set kind of a maximum contract amount on-call to be something simple, that only runs you a thousand, two thousand, or as in the on-call, it just go up to forty thousand. Anything over forty thousand would be RFQ'd as a separate project.
So can I, this is just for, when we're looking for an engineer, we're not necessarily going out and looking for an engineer right now, but maybe after we get the street study and all that done, and then we have to decide what we do next, that's what this is for?
Well, I would go ahead and advertise this RFQ that's approved by council, so that we can start getting some qualifications in, and then determine later on who that engineering firm would be for that on-call service. Yeah, we're not hiring any specific firm right now. We're just approving this RFQ so that it can go out and we can receive qualifications.
So cost-wise, we don't have a set amount?
Well, in the budget, we allocated money in various departments for engineering.
So we do have money allocated?
Yes.
But there is no money required to go out for this RFQ, correct?
For this RFQ, at this point, no. You can have one on-call, you can have three on-call, and then never call any of them.
And then who will do the scoring of the proposals?
We'll do it internally.
And we have qualifications to do that, or since we don't have an engineer?
To score an RFQ, yeah. Well, that would be myself, the mayor has sat in on a couple of them. We've had, Cynthia's been in one, right? Well, there's Megan and some other members. Scoring an RFQ is not necessarily a science, as determining that is looking at the RFQs and seeing who can provide the services and has the experience that we're looking for.
I would disagree that you want to have a subject matter expert on it. I would recommend you go out to Sol Ross to go find a call-by engineer to be part of that team.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, collect sign. And all of them, in favor of the motion? But you all were against.
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I hope you raised your hand.
No, I didn't.
Okay, no. My mistake. Okay, motion carries. Let's go to items five.
So item number five is the second and final reading of ordinance 2019-03-01 of the City of Alpine, Texas, Amendment, Chapter 94, Chapter 2, Resubstantiation of Police Service for Acting of the Order to the Cumulative, Providing for Certain Building Costs, Providing for Saving Costs, Providing for Penalties, Providing for Publication Through the Official Paper and Providing an Effective Date. And I move that we approve the second and final reading of that ordinance I just described.
A second?
Okay. Motion been made, second, any more discussion?
Yes, sir, I'm the one that tabled it last time, just upon the input, one clarification, and to affirm that it was only applicable to the police escort services for manufacturing housing, single-trip permit, and the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, and walked through that.
Yes, sir.
And talked to those who expressed some concern about it, and once they understood the ordinance, they said, makes sense to them.
Yeah, it's only for slide two. Okay.
Well, office of terror. It is for manufacturing housing, single-trip permits. So it doesn't matter who it is.
What company it is.
It doesn't matter that's for.
Yeah. Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I'm watching. All those opposed, light sign. Motion carries. Thanks, sir. Okay, item six.
So item six, and I'll take them one at a time, is a direct result of the actions that we took out of, after executive council in our special meeting on April 6th. And we took eight specific actions. The intent behind this one is to respond to one of those eight. And that is to take action on a resolution, a specific notice there, 2019-04-05 regarding the importance of truth and good faith in conducting city business. I presume that the council has had the opportunity to review the resolution, but for those in the city that have not, the resolution requires all employees of the city to faithfully tell the truth and not shape the truth regarding matters of city business. And it talks about expectations of council, city manager, and all employees to do their duty and best their ability according to charter code, ordinances, resolutions, and policies of the city. That the citizens expect the city council, the city manager, and all employees to tell the truth about the status of city action being taken, having been taken, being taken, or actions planned to be taken. That the citizens of Alpine recognize the differences in opinion, strategy, policy, and perspectives. The focus of the city council, city manager, and all employees should be about serving the citizens of Alpine, and the citizens of Alpine recognize that it's important that a safe environment be created by the city council. Ensure that those who come forward, or they believe that laws, ordinances, resolutions, and policies of the city of Alpine are not being followed, and/or they believe that the truth is not being told by members of the city council, the city manager, or other city employees, the resolutions ask for the following four actions. One, the city council hereby establishes that provided false or misleading statements in the conduct of city businesses grounds for termination from employment of the city. And the city council will ensure that any city employee that brings forward an issue based upon fact or provides information about an issue of good faith shall be protected from actions by the council because they brought that issue facts forward. And the city attorney is directed to create a formal process for implementation of this resolution or ordinance for review and approval by the city council. And number four, that the resolution ordinance be included in the City of Alpine Employee Handbook. So that's the proposal that I made.
Okay, so second. Motion's plain second, any discussion? Seeing none?
No, no, no. I guess I'm just thinking out loud here, but this resolution sounds good. As I look at myself and my position, when I accepted the city council opposition, I took another, the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Texas, City Charter of Alpine, and so forth. I also signed an ethics code not to use my position to seek financial gain in any way, nor to sway or manipulate public opinion to fit a personal agenda, or to look good. I did it to do good, for the benefit of the community. When I first came on board, interestingly enough, one of the first duties was to hire a new city manager. And after interviewing quite a few folks that applied, we hired a very capable individual who has helped, in my opinion, helped to establish the groundwork for enhancing the quality of services for Alpine residents. I do feel that we should allow the city manager to move forth in fulfillment to the established beliefs, using the City of Alpine employee handbook and the City of Alpine policies and guidelines as established policies, the norms. In my opinion, this is just adding more bureaucracy. That's an opinion.
Mayor, find me.
Yes, ma'am.
All of this is already in the employee handbook. It was in the old employee handbook, and it's in the new employee handbook.
It is not, actually. What was removed from the employee handbook concludes employees who bring forward issue based upon fact or lies to the city council. That was taken out.
Okay.
In the disciplinary process, it does reserve matters to city council.
So point that to me in the book, because...
Well, I don't have a bucket, if I'd known that's where we were going, I would have.
Did I not see the agenda before you?
No, actually, I didn't see the whole packet until I came and sat down right here.
I want to ask, what is the difference between the City of Alpine Personnel Policy Guidelines and the City of Alpine Employee Handbook? Do the ones that are together?
The one on top is the old one, the one on the bottom is the one that was just adopted by council in October.
Okay.
I think it was in November.
Yeah, the city, the handbook was approved December 2018. It has to just get underway. But I noticed in going through both documents, it seems like most of what's in the previous document is somewhat included in the handbook, maybe the terminology is different. The only thing I saw that was different is the grievance process. But if one follows closely, what the handbook is saying is that we have a chain of command. And if you follow the chain of command, that basically takes care of some of the issues that would be under agreement. But you need to go to your supervisor and, you know, get guidance, best of all, proceed, to be able to come up with a result, solution to any conflict. So I don't, I don't see too much of a difference, although maybe if there is a need for more clarification to the handbook of grievance process, let's just adopt it. That's added.
No, here's some grievance.
Okay, now.
In the new handbook, the council is the grievance committee.
Where does it state that?
In the disciplinary process, it has something about matters reserved for city council. So those matters under, well, I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Here's your order. While you're going through the grievance commit, the grievance process was taken out of the handbook.
No, grievance committee.
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 That's the only thing that was taken out, because it was redundant, and it didn't deal with the issues that would have come to council anyways. So if you were complaining about your work schedule or work assignment, you couldn't go to the grievance committee anyways. So again, when you get into the serious issues, those are matters that are reserved for city council.
I will go to page 55, chain of command. City of Alpine is a clearly established organization chart, see if that makes one of the city structures outlined in this handbook under, I think, the actual, and the city structure. This makes it easy for employees and managers to follow chain of command or reporting files or communicating with workers. Any disagreements between employees and supervisors who are current or to be done, expect results in adequacy or before manual evaluation progress is responsible for change. With the exception of matters reserved for the city council, the general file authority for personnel matters rests with the city manager, who should develop, administer, and determine personnel policies and procedures that apply to all departments and employees. Only the city manager may delegate, this is necessary and appropriate to department directors and managers.
Sir, with the exception of matters reserved to city council?
Where is that defined?
Should be there. On 10 and 11.
So page 10 and 11, it's under the section Workplace Violence. So section four is under the previous page nine.
Well, 10 and 11 refers to all four of those sections, one, two, three, and four.
So it refers to everything on page eight and here's nine. Says reporting violations on employees' compliance or harassment or harassment of the client. Anyone in the workplace, including supervisors, coworkers, should clearly inform the individual engaged in offensive behavior, and request that the behavior stop. If the behavior continues, and the employees not feel comfortable trusting the individual engaged in offensive behavior, the employee must immediately bring the matter to the attention of his supervisor or the human resources department. If your supervisor is the source of alleged behavior, report the problem to the city manager or HR department. All complaints will be made in writing, we investigate it thoroughly, confidentially, and without bias. So so far, we've not got the city council there. Any employee becomes aware of observed these or actions by a coworker, consultant, customer, that's interesting, customer, a third-party vendor, visitor, or anyone else must notify the supervisor, human resources department, committee, or submitted written statement detailed favor. The employee should notify the human resources department, aware of any restraining orders that are in effect, and the existence of other non-work-bluated situations. Retaliation. The City of Alpine prohibits retaliation of an account against employees of good faith by harassment or workplace violence, complaints, or assistance in investigating such complaints. To extend possible limits of text support and access through investigation discipline. All express discrimination, harassment, or retaliation complaints before the human resources, all of which have been properly driven and investigated to determine whether the alleged misconduct occurred. Supervisors must treat all complaints seriously and confidentially. All reports of suspicions, discrimination, harassment, sexual or otherwise workplace violence or threatened supervision must be referred to the human resources department. I'm still working my way through to see when it gets to city council. So far, I can't find it. Everything goes to human resources.
So that section, investigation and disciplinary action, because investigation is reserved by city council in the charter. So there's probably a reference that was left out there as to that city charter.
Okay, and so that is not in the employee handbook therefore, it is not happened. That needs to be added back in. Part of the resolution is to ask the city attorney to go make sure that it's covered. It is covered in the city charter under section 3.11. It gives council authority, but if we don't have a mechanism for finding out, it never gets investigated by us. And there is no provision in the handbook for us to get any information. It all goes to Human Resources. So I go back to the purpose behind the resolution is to ask and go put that together. We don't tolerate, or at least I hope that we do, false or misleading statements. We need a mechanism for getting employees to bring forward issues they choose to, because we've already discussed that demonstrated that the employee handbook does not have that. We're asking the city attorney to develop a formal process to come back to us. And we're also asking that be included in the employee handbook. That's the intent behind the resolution.
Okay.
We can't hear you, Mick.
We got your mouth moving.
Can you hear me down?
Got you out, yes.
Oh, man.
That's what we said.
We're just got a lot of sound problems tonight. Well, as I understand it, I'm being asked to develop a policy for approval by the council regarding these issues that are in the resolution. Are there any other questions?
Well, I thought this one had it pretty well. So I think the only thing that's missing in the handbook is that reference to 3.11 in the charter.
Okay, okay.
Is there anything in the employee handbook that says members of the city will not comply or make misleading statements?
I think on page 11 at the top, it talks about malicious or misleading statements.
Okay.
That says if the investigation reveals that the charges were brought false in a malicious attempt, the charging party may be subject to disciplinary action. It does not talk about making false statements that are not associated with the investigation.
Right.
I think that goes under your Code of Ethics and General Behavior.
Where is that documented? I'll say it was.
Under General Behavior Standard.
I guess in my view, to emphasize the importance of this, if we find it in the handbook, great. If we don't, I don't see a problem with moving forward. Then we're good, we're called for the question.
I would be happy to review the chart, all the charter provisions prior to preparing anything final for you. And I'll do that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Hold up a question. Question, good call. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Three.
Like sign. You have two.
I was late.
What's that?
I was late raising my hand.
Yes. Okay, so two and two.
Three, one.
Three, one. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, that's one.
Okay, item number seven, which is discussing, consider, take actions regarding development of city employees, which was also an item we talked about. There were a couple of action items that this covers. And that resolution is all about requiring training of all employees to the City of Alpine. Whereas the citizens of Alpine expect that all employees of the City of Alpine have necessary skills to execute the responsibilities and positions that are assigned. And citizens expect the City Council to ensure that over 40 hours of training for each employer included in the annual city council. And that recognize that some training can ensure, can and should occur as on-the-job training. And the citizens believe the majority of training that employees receive should be focused on improving, enhancing their skills. And the best way to accomplish that through instruction by expertise that is beyond the capability of city employees to deliver. And the citizens of Alpine expect those individuals assigned supervisory responsibility over the actions of other city employees, the direct interaction and personal training from professionals in management and leadership, we talked about that. And that the citizens of Alpine expect the City Council put in place a process to ensure that the training is conducted in accordance with the expectations of this resolution. And there are four specific items. That at the beginning of each fiscal year, the City Council will review the training strategy and plan for each department, ensuring the requirements of this resolution are complied with. And that two, the City Council will monitor the progress of training on a minimum of a quarterly basis and ensure that in those cases where accomplishments are not consistent with the strategy applied for each department, or actions, actions are taken. That prior to the end of May, the city manager will present to the City Council the status of training for each department, both fiscal year 2018, 2019. And that prior to the end of May 2019, the city manager will present to City Council the status of management slash supervisor training for each individual who's an employee of the city who's responsible for the actions of other city employees for fiscal year 2018, 2019. And Mayor, I mean that the City Council approve that resolution as documented and just presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been in second, any discussion?
I guess. Again, realizing that the city manager is responsible for a full range of supervisory duties, including the training of employees, I am confident that the city manager is fully capable of assessing employee training needs, the development of appropriate curriculum, instruction methods, and training evaluation processes. The approved City of Alpine handbook, pages 29, 37, which we approved in December 2018, fully covers this issue. And in Appendix 17, page 105, the handbook also indicates a training record form for employees. My opinion is that let the city manager do her work, let, and the implication of the implementation of the City of Alpine Employee Handbook.
Mayor, find me. So the 40 hours of training was an expectation that I first started talking about about this time last year, in that all employees, including myself, needed to continue with their education to develop their skills to provide quality services to the citizens of Alpine. And October 1 was when the budget kind of came into being. I know in talking to Heather, she has struggled with certain departments and getting them to participate in the trainings or even answer a simple survey as far as availability for trainings. We have an, we estimated what that budget cost was going to be for those 40 hours based on the information that we had kind of during the summer. I think we're still well within that. Didn't get a chance to really look at all of that before coming to the meeting. I think that holding, holding the City of Alpine 40 hours in its first year of implementation is not reasonable. You've got new people on staff, the HR position is a new position in itself. Establishing the relationships with the trainers and identifying who our resources are and bringing them in. And then, of course, getting the supervisors on board, going through their process with their evaluations. To make them accountable to those trainings in the first year. It's a change year. You know, you can't expect something to say it's going to happen and then have it happen exactly that way over a 12-month period. I think that Heather has done the best that she can. I continue to encourage them. I, you know, we had a manager's meeting and we threw in an hour of training. We, that's, you know, that is kind of how we've resorted to make sure that we continue putting forth these committees' training. And they are all in professional development as well as kind of personal development. I think if you don't look at that aspect of an employee holistically, that you miss out on stuff. And so while I appreciate the added bite to the policy, I think that it's, I mean, it's difficult to say, yes, everyone in the, in the city is going to have 40 hours of training because we are still hiring. So there will be employees, say, for example, the ones that started yesterday, that are not going to get 40 hours this year. There are not, even though we budgeted for that, that number of employees to have X amount of training. And again, when you set a goal, it's something you're trying to achieve. I think once we get through this year, we'll get to look at kind of key performance indicators and compare those numbers to see how we're moving towards those. I mean, it's difficult to tell, and I'm going to, you know, throw the streets out, not that I'm picking on Eddie at all, but, you know, Eddie, who just finally got a full department as of yesterday, that now he's got to figure out how to get all these other people, you know, into 40 hours without leaving his department completely alone. You know, they, they are doing the best they can to get them with their appropriate licenses and as well as other development training, communications training, time management training, prioritization, past training and things like that. But I just, I think that, you know, to say, okay, by May, yes, everyone that's employed is going to have their 40 hours is not realistic.
That is not what this resolution asks for. This resolution asks for four things. Two, first two are, eight, prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, we're going to look at the planning. The second thing it says is prior to the end of May, so we're in the middle of April, so in six weeks, council will like the city, the status of training for each department, and the status of training for management situation. That's what it's asking for. Why is that so reasonable given our responsibilities as the City Council, particularly given the turnover rates, whatever they may be, because we don't know the issue yet, to look and say, are our employees getting the proper training? So that's the basis for it. And that seems like a reasonable request, from my standpoint, that we gave a look at on a quarterly basis, just give it up, everything may be wonderful. I don't understand why the pushback, you say, well, it goes up.
Shouldn't the HR have guidelines? Okay, this is the type of training we need. And then come back to you, city manager, tell you this or that, and then present it to council.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
As long as you see it as just a report, I mean, if it's just a report, it's a report. If you're going to start holding people some kind of accountable to that, I don't think it's fair to do that in this first year.
Do not even get nothing?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible to make a public comment on the show?
Yes, sir.
Hi, John Kennedy, work for, resident and business owner. Moved out of Alpine about a year and a half ago. Also a city employee with the Water and Wastewater Utility. And I just wanted to echo the need. And just, I know for everyone I work with, we all appreciate the opportunity for professional development. We appreciate the city manager's plan for that. This resolution is a long gone vein. I know, you know, in the water and wastewater world, we have licensing requirements from the state. And y'all are familiar with the consent decree, with the TCEQ for the wastewater plants, some of the other things that we've been dealing with. And due to our requirements on both the water side and the wastewater side, we're not really meeting those requirements. I think we probably, I'm sure the city manager is doing a good job of having that relationship with TCEQ to make sure they understand what we're going through. But, you know, the sooner that we can all be licensed up and meet that need and the sooner that all of us in the city can be brought to our full potential to participate and then develop our internal capacities within the city. I know we all very much look forward to that. And so we appreciate that everybody in us wanted to stand up here and support that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, you're welcome, sorry.
John Kennedy. Okay. Easy to remember.
We also have action. Yeah, yeah, we love your advice.
Okay, any more discussion?
This is just saying, we want, we want to get a report on where we're at at the beginning of the year, but where we're at right now.
Quarter, what is it?
Quarter, yep.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Obstinate?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, let's go to item number eight.
So the last item on this list is also consistent with our discussion that we had to the executive session that we took action on in open session at our last special City Council meeting. The challenge is ensuring that all of council is up to speed with regard to the location of the city manager. And the resolution is 2018-4-7. The citizens of Alpine expect the city manager, City of Alpine, to be available to fulfill the responsibilities of the city manager as the limited city charter ordinances, resolutions, and policies of the city. And whereas the citizens of Alpine expect the City Council to ensure most occasionally the city manager come out with other responsibilities as the limited city charter, ordinances, resolutions, policies of the city, that the City Council will put in a desk that has required the city charter, someone who will be acting city manager. And whereas all the City Council expects the city manager to follow the same procedures and policies of the City of Alpine Employee Policies Handbook regarding advanced request for vacation, scheduled medical appointments, prefer to our time off, or other circumstances. The City Council takes the following actions, one. At least monthly, the city manager will send an email and provide other documentation to City Council on planned vacations, scheduled medical appointments, prefer to our time off, or other circumstances that would cause the city manager to not be available to fulfill the city manager responsibilities. And two, at least quarterly, the city manager will present to City Council, either a public forum or executive session, the status of time off for the city manager. And in the event of an emergency that requires the city manager to not be present to fulfill the city management duties, the city council, the city manager will send an email to the full City Council that absence worked or, and any further information about the absence that can be made available without compromising the privacy of the city manager. So I propose that the City Council approve that resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion paid.
Second. And the discussion behind it is very simple. Today, City Council gets no notification. And I think it's incumbent upon us as council to be aware of the location of the city manager. Because when there are absences, it will be helpful for us to know how to go work items. Clearly, we want to work through the city manager, but the city manager's not going to be here. Actions have to occur by the city, no different than if we're not available. We have a requirement and obligation to notify our peers or the city secretary to let us know about that.
Now, I think that should apply to all our cellwork employees. I think there was like two or three. It doesn't apply to them?
I'm sorry.
Okay, no. Okay.
I would just like to know, is this a resolution that any previous city manager had to follow?
So I will tell you that every other previous city manager, since I'm aware, did in fact follow this. They notified us, kept this posted, kept us up to speed. And when that city manager left, everything went kind of cold and silent. So while it was not written, they certainly followed it.
I'll disagree with that because I never got a notification from the previous city manager.
Well, I certainly did. So maybe it's uniqueness about city managers. Did you ever see?
I, I still haven't.
Okay. Yes, I, I have to be honest and say that I was a little bit baffled when Counselor Escobedo, I guess, required about wanting to find out the, get a copy of the monthly basis for the city manager. And, but after, and then of course I did my copy, since there was very good about sending me copies of that.
And then.
Yeah. And then looking through that, I put on my analysis and creative thinking cap. And certain analysis, and I'd like to share that with you. That during, keeping in mind that a typical work week is 52 weeks a year, which equals to about 2,018 hours of work. And when I looked at the...
We, the city, would have lost about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grants that we approved at that March meeting. So, hey, I don't, you, this is a big deal. This is about keeping us up to speed about what's going on. I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
I've got two comments. We have an acting city manager, correct?
No, no, no. When the city manager's not here, we have an acting city manager.
Okay. And second, what does the city manager's contract say?
Relative to what?
To hours worked and compensation.
I don't know. I don't know what the city manager's contract, or what it likely on it.
No, I just don't want to us to violate the, or contract.
So, so as I recall, and I have the city manager correctly, it says she works, you know, consistent with the employee handbook, employee policies, that's all this says, uh, and all we're asking for is notification when she's not going to be here. I find it difficult to believe that such a, a reasonable request.
Any more discussion?
I have been at board meetings where the city manager wasn't at, um, the board needed direction.
What board meetings were those?
Planning meetings.
Um, this isn't applied to that, though. This just applies to city council, not board meetings.
This is just, yeah. She has no schedule for that. This is not about trying to tell the board meetings, I, I just know.
I'm going to call for the question. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to item number nine.
So, Mr. Mayor, I often, prior to going on to item number nine, recognizing that we have an executive session to follow action item number nine, that I would like to propose that city council extend beyond the, uh, nine p.m. deadline unless we find ourselves in a situation of not being able to.
Second. Any discussion?
Okay. City council, any comments?
Thanks, guys, for coming out. Good long meeting.
Thanks for coming out. Good seeing all of you, and, um, see you next time.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming. Chris, looks like we're going to see more of you.
Okay, thanks all very much. And I will entertain the motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, pursuant to the Texas government, section fifty-five one dot zero seven one, council consultation of common matters of interest with the union city attorney, under the Texas disciplinary rules of protection of that, council, this chapter, in the course of discussion in the item in post session, section fifty-five dot fifty-five one dot dot zero seven, these are personal matters, that A, the city council, the department director, and the city council should consider the ways of employees, and that will be deliberate or noted, personally, when we will discuss, and A, the board and session, about, you know, they shall consider.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion, any second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. And the families? Eight, thirteen. Okay, we'll take the bottom of the recess.